All right, can I say anything exciting?
Yeah.
Taxes.
Probably taxes.
All right, so in respect of everyone's time, I would like to pull the order to make the meeting to order.
Okay.
And let's start off with the pledge of allegiance.
One second, I have to leave by seven because I don't drive at night.
Very good.
So I'm just telling you if I'm adding anyone.
I have to have you out by then.
Please by six, right?
And the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agnes, you said six o'clock, right? You said seven?
Yeah, I did.
I still have my head.
You are starting teaching.
Oh, good.
For what, sorry?
So if I may, we'll just do roll call, so we have NBC.
President.
Tom Lennon. Agnes.
Yes.
And Kevin.
President.
And Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Edward.
President.
Nick, oh, Nicholas is...
He's in Florida.
He's in Florida. And Iris.
Here.
In January as well. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, Sunshine Law, the schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to The Courier-News, The Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the libraries vestibule and are available at the reference desk. This will be formally the public portion of our meeting. So we'll go to approval of minutes on the prior meeting? That's true, but I'm sorry, please forgive me. As, well, let me start off with something, since everyone has joined us here. I have to make a public apology for my absence over the past few months. I've been doubly tasked at work with two responsibilities, given a great opportunity at the hospital, moving from one department to another, but the other position was never filled. So I had the great pleasure of filling two jobs and getting paid for one.
Lucky you.
Which I'm very happy now my life has come into order. Over the past few weeks, at the end of a little bit more organization brought to my life, my Andre and I decided to take some time off and we spent a few weeks down in Florida. So I've now returned. I understand some things have taken place. I've received a phone call that I was nominated to be a vice president and a chair.
You were elected.
And I understand that I was elected.
Yeah.
And I'd like to say thank you so very, very much for your trust, considering I had been absent during those time periods. I've also come to understand that we've had a loss in that meeting, John. And it's so very sad to hear. And I, my heart goes to his, and I'm sure all of ours does, go to his family as well. Is there anything that would like to be brought to the floor in a public meeting, please?
Ann Taylor, resident. I was just wondering, you seated a new board member last month, I believe. You don't have a formal swearing-in ceremony or any kind of...
Never had.
Never had. Never had.
I did it at the across the street.
She did, she swore in?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
As a member of the board.
I haven't sworn in, this is my second year.
No, no, four years already.
Yeah, I did when I, when I brought the papers to the building across the street.
Well, mine's different because I was appointed. Yeah, mine's is different. I'm standing for a superintendent, so.
Thank you.
You have a title.
Is there any other public points to be made, or do you want to bring anything to the table at this time? Would you like to read the minutes from these?
No, we don't, you can accept them and we ask if anybody has any questions.
All right.
Do we have... We accepted minutes as...
And do we have a second? Do we have a second? All those in...
Sorry, who was the second?
NBC.
NBC. All those in favor of approving prior minutes? Say aye. Aye. Closed?
You have to recuse yourself if you want to be arrested.
You might have read the text. I read them, yeah. And I'm second, not first.
All right, directors' reports.
Do the green sheets first, financial reports.
Any questions with regard to the budget thus far?
Line item 908 maintenance automation, listed for... That's the only one we're over.
That is for our Cersei Dynex. Yeah, they were, yeah, we went over a little bit. That's all we're going to pay.
Okay.
That's an annual fee, yeah.
Got it.
That's Cersei Dynex, that's the, what I made the catalog.
Catalog?
Yeah.
Why am I missing that, that we went over?
All right.
Okay.
Are you looking at Franklin Park?
Oh, okay. I'm like...
Yes, some things are for the both, no?
No, this is the one. You don't have it. Yeah, look at it.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then Franklin Park.
You can see 908?
Yeah, 908.
Fourth line.
Yeah, that one's the 104.
All right, thank you very much. I don't see this. Thank you very much.
Do you have the other one? Franklin Park?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I do have Franklin Park.
Yeah, it looks good. I have any questions?
All right, financial reports, so if there are any further questions, we move on. Director's report, please.
I'd like to do the director's report and I'd like to kind of go back over to some other financial stuff. I didn't even kind of know where to talk about it, but I'll do this, the program report first. It's not in the written report, but Saturday was Maker Day, Makers' Day, and it was very successful. We had it at both locations. And at the next meeting, I'll give you statistics and more details about what happened. During the rest of the month, we had 100 programs and we had 1,513 people who came. One of the more unusual programs that we've had periodically is the simultaneous chess tournament. Used to be with Mayor Levine, now it's with preholder Levine. So that was on March 10. And we had an upgrade to Cersei Dynex during the month that went relatively okay. These things are, they never go really smoothly, but it went okay, it's done. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, then. I'm doubling back. Iris had asked, meeting, last meeting, she wanted to know what the interest rates were on all our various accounts. That's on the screen sheet. The pretty green sheet. So if you, if the board wants to discuss moving money, or this is the way it stands right now.
I think what, the reason I asked a question, and I didn't realize that we fall into a different category because we're a public entity. So we don't, we don't, you know, any of the higher interest rates are not for us.
Right.
I'm sorry to put you through the work.
Oh, no, no, don't know. I'm gonna talk about that next, actually. Always learn something during these things. So, as part of my quest to find a place that would give us a higher interest rate, Nick recommended Treasury Bill, Treasury Bills, and with Charles Schwab. You can open up an account there at no charge, and then once you open up the account, once it's set up, then you can buy Treasury Bills. And the interest rate right now on that, if it's one year, is 2.48 percent. So I do have, this is a little different than what we've had with the bank because Charles Schwab thinks that there should be two signers, and actually, there should be, because what happens if I got hit by a bus? And it also would like the officers to fill out paperwork, so I brought paperwork. They selected the president and the secretary. So I brought in something for Iris, and I'll give Nick his when he gets back. Doesn't look too bad. I'm giving you an original and a copy, just in case you sense that.
That was my next question, because when I originally put the original call into Wells Fargo, they said to me, "Well, all the board members have to come together." I go, "Well, it's never been done before." I said, "Who signs for it?" I said, "Right now, I think there's only one person." He said, "That can't be." So that was gonna be my next discussion, so I'm glad that you took care of it.
You don't all have to, they just said... And you don't have to go there, if you just fill this out, then I, they gave me a...
Now, which, this is Charles Schwab. And where's their office in Princeton?
Yeah, yeah. So that's where that stands.
And for the treasurer, how long is it locked up?
One month, I mean, one year.
One year, one year, twelve months.
Which isn't bad, because the price, the one that Wells Fargo was gonna do was 2.6 for 11 months, so...
Yeah, and they really kind of, as you...
Yeah, they gave it to, yeah, they, right. And after I watched them on C-SPAN interrogating the president, oh boy, did they put him through the wringer.
Yeah.
Okay.
What happens if the market bid falls? Will we be affected? If the market bid falls, will we be affected?
You get less interest.
I will, I will double check on that, but my understanding was it stays the same. Stays the same.
Do you want this back today?
Oh, no, no. And I'm gonna have to get a copy of your driver's license on that, too.
Photo copy on the way out today?
But she has to be able to, so it's...
I don't see that being a...
Okay, okay.
With page before. With page before.
We'll be out. All right, so prove your, to have your, your report approved, or is it necessarily not?
No.
No, no.
Okay.
There's no presence report?
There's no presence report?
Correspondence.
There's no correspondence?
No correspondence? Old business?
No, no.
If someone would just like to bring me up to speed, I'm very pleased to hear about the conversations taking place with the school board, about some property.
That would be an executive session.
All right, very good, thank you. Other than my questions, I could always speak offline on that, so.
Should we go into the executive session now?
No.
New business.
This other stuff first.
New business.
All right, old business, new business, the audit?
Okay, here's the audit. This is our yearly audit that we legally have to do.
Should we have any comments on this, or that'll be per executive order?
It could be now.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
We have, have an...
Yeah, you have to absorb.
So someone's taken?
Yes, there is.
They're just saying what they do.
At the end, probably.
January, have you reviewed it?
When?
Have you reviewed it?
Yes.
And did you find anything? Did they find anything?
They didn't find anything, and I didn't find anything. I'm not a CPA. I also know that nothing unusual has gone on during the year, but they didn't find anything to question or to remark on.
In our opinion, the financial statements referred to, referred to above presently present fairly and in a material respect the financial position of the township, Franklin Township Public Library as of June 3, 2018 and '17, and the changes in its assets and its cash flows for the year that ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. That's very wordy, but it sounds like everything's been done right.
That's my interpretation.
The township audit is about 20 times as big.
Yeah, I would, I would imagine. So everything, there weren't any red herrings, apparently.
Everybody's done with that, then. Another part of the audit is what's called the proposed transfer form. There's a law in New Jersey that if a library has surplus funds, they are often obligated to return those funds to the town. So every year, the auditors fill out this form. It's a formula, they fill it out online. This is a copy of the online version. And as long as the bottom, bottom line 21 says zero, that means that there's no surplus that we would need to give back to the town. So I'm just gonna pass that around so you can see that.
Those are the only copy you have?
Yeah. And then, well, I guess that half of the table is looking at the transfer form. We also have our Form 990 that goes to Internal Revenue, and I'll take a look at that.
I might take a look at the 990, and look at the top sheet, that's the summary. Supplemental documents underneath. Get the whole house.
January, did, I don't, if Treasury Bills, can you, can you buy them for more than 12 months?
Probably.
Did you answer?
Probably.
So would it not, you know, about stacking? Would you not, in other words, put one in for a year, some in for a year, some in for two years, some in three years?
I can do that if the board, if the board wants.
That's...
All we're doing right now is just setting up the account. We haven't bought anything, we're not buying anything yet.
But I think that's something, I think that, that's a way of...
Increasing interest.
Increasing your interest. And, and not, and it's stacked, so you're not putting all your money in one place. It's not all at the lowest level, it's not all at the highest, it's... Oh. I used to type these. Did you see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, the third item under new business was the, our internet policy. And I included that because we've had this for quite a while, it's been from 2003. And I thought maybe it was a good idea for the board to look it over, just review it. You should review it periodically, so you know what's going on. This is also on our website, and whenever you log on to one of our computers, this comes up and you have to agree to follow it before you can go any further on the computer. So if you want to take a look at it and see if you want to change anything, or...
You notice the last item, using internet workstation to conduct commercial activities, including the sale of goods and services. So if someone wanted to put up an item on eBay, is that like, no?
Well, you can, yeah, it's not a no. What it, this is aimed at people who run their businesses from here. An actual business, not, not buying stuff on eBay.
Well, but you could sell stuff on eBay. Could you work on your website for your business? It's, I'm, I don't think we would mind that, but it's kind of worded... I mean, at the very last paragraph, professional librarians and staff are authorized to terminate an internet session. So they're, in a way, they're judges and they can use discretion. I don't think, I mean, that maybe comes to you through training them that those kinds of thing, or maybe they know it, that those kinds of things are okay. We just don't want somebody running a business.
Yes, yeah.
In other words, using public funds for...
Private, private, yeah.
Proprative, right.
But if somebody was running a business, excuse me, they would be here daily?
Yes.
They wouldn't be...
We have had people...
Taking up the computer for other people a lot.
But it would be obvious to the staff if somebody was here.
Isn't there a time limit?
There's a time limit, but if there's nobody waiting, you can extend.
Yeah.
Number four, I read this at home, and number four kind of brought to mind. There's a lot of discussion to either way, because if somebody's doing something inappropriate, then it behooves us, I think, to, to protect the other people who are using the library.
I'm sorry, I'm not following you.
Well, no person shall use a library internet station in a way that is inappropriate for an open public area shared by people of all ages and backgrounds, or that disturbs or interferes with patrons, employees, or the operation of the library. So, I mean, that sounds appropriate.
Yeah.
Except if somebody is looking at pornography or doing something.
Well, that's to be...
Then...
That would be inappropriate.
That's inappropriate, but we don't say anywhere that...
No, it under it.
Yeah, A.
And then it lists what you cannot do.
And receive print, text, and transcript.
So then if somebody is doing that, then...
They're violating the policy.
They're violating the policy, and we terminate the session.
And professional libraries, librarians on staff, the bottom paragraph, are authorized to terminate the internet session.
Now, back to Mayor Kramer, you could add the language, you know, you shouldn't use library computers for commercial purposes, financial gains, or fraud. That will basically cover your business aspect as well. And I can help out with some language, because I got plenty of acceptable use policy, etc. For school education, yeah.
For school?
Yeah, we have, so, yeah, I can help out with the language.
I wouldn't mind seeing a tweak of I.
Okay, so what do you want to say for I?
I say you have commercial activity, sale of goods and services.
Yeah, that could be expanded.
Financial gain or fraud.
Right, absolutely. Where are you putting it?
Right after goods and services?
Financial gain or fraud?
Or fraud.
Should we have a statement in violation of the law? Oh, we have that. Well, then, not quite. Maybe not. We could get... We could get two wrapped up in it.
Yes, yes, we can, yeah. Much of this is taken from other libraries.
Now, when patrons are allowed to connect wireless if they bring their own devices, correct? And they will also sign off before they click OK?
No.
Okay, so that needs to happen. Whoever designs your wireless access network, and that person, you know how you go to any place that provides you wireless access? Normally, they ask for your email, and they capture, and then they have a disclosure where you must say, "I agree." Because basically, that is your acceptable use policy before they go online. Because, you know, they may not be using the workstation, if they're using their own device, laptop, etc., they're still using your network, which is part of your resources. And they should basically follow your acceptable use policy.
And they're still in the public place.
Yeah, so that...
Do you have one at the school?
It's gonna take a little bit of doing.
Yes, we do, we have our guest network.
If you like, I'll bring in the one that we use from the hospital.
Yeah, and it's based on whoever designs your wireless network, whenever they put in the password, or whether how to access your wireless network, sometimes they have to secure and they have a guest. So, for example, we have a guest network. Once you log on, open up your web browser, a window comes up. They say, "Welcome to Franklin Board Education, it's our guest network." Here goes our policy, click here to agree. If you don't click here, you don't get access. So we need to think about it.
Do they have that at my work?
Yeah, a lot of places have that. McDonald's, you know, you name it, they have that, yeah. So that's the point, that you have that. Especially this day and age, because 2003, we didn't have a lot of portable devices.
Yeah.
Now we do.
More and more.
Yeah, we have more, so, yeah.
And do you sign out after you finish, or how?
Well, once you log on, it, it basically, you're consenting, but you should do it every single time.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
In a related topic, do we have much trouble with viruses?
No, we've got really good, we've got a really good firewall and protection from it.
Right.
We were hacked years ago, years ago by the Chinese.
Of course, this is televised, I hope we're not inviting somebody.
Which years ago, we've improved things greatly, since then.
It's not a challenge.
Any further, new business?
Oh, a very minor thing. I probably missed it every time I came in. When you come in the front door, off to the side, there, these display. And it says, "Look here," and they're empty right now. Is that just because we're changing them over? Okay, but they haven't always been empty.
I did a double check, because it was the first time I ever saw them.
Maybe that's, maybe I just noticed the emptiness.
We've had people who displayed their, expressed concern that people weren't looking at them, so we put those up, not for seeing that there would be some days when it's empty.
Okay.
All right, so do we have a desire to go into exec... All right, so do we have a desire to go into executive?
Uh, yes, to educate you on what's been happening.
Excellent. So, if you'd be so kind?
Well, we, we have to motion.
Motion to public, please, I'm sorry. We have a motion for NBC.
Yes.
Second.
Second, hey, second. And so, all in favor, closing, public?
You gotta shut the door.
As opposed?
Camera off. I guess if you oppose, you just leave it.
All right, so may I have a motion to close executive? Open to public?
Second.
Seconding. All in favor?
Do you have any other comments?
Any other discussions?
Are there any further news on the North Section?
Um, so, the youth center was reviewed at the planning board, and reviewed is the right word, they don't have to approve it. And they were just, you know, they look at parking, and, you know, should you do this, should you do that? Do you wanna tweak it this way or that way? And, you know, there were some people who talked about they're concerned about traffic.
Yeah, I, I was.
And, et cetera, but basically, the planning board gave an affirmative nod to it. And so, it moves on. It looks like 1,600 feet? It was, originally, it was gonna be 1,200. Or what was, was originally 1,000 square, I forget. Yeah, it's, the library's gonna get a bigger area than we thought. And what we have to do is start negotiating, 'cause we were gonna pay something per square foot for, for the space, but we weren't gonna have to pay for, we wouldn't pay rent, we wouldn't pay heat.
Custodial, right.
Right.
Yeah, square foot.
Right, so, um, we need to, at some point, talk with the town and come up with a number for that.
Do we have any input?
And if we wanna discuss any specifics of that, we go back and do executive session. Which we can.
We'll talk to the mayor.
So, that, I mean, that's, that's where that lies. We're talking about, I think we're talking about groundbreaking this year.
No, September 2020, they said.
Was that, wasn't that completion? Was that completion?
I, I...
I thought that Mr. Bornacher said September 2020.
Yeah.
They have the article, and I thought it said completion 2020.
Let me call Mr. Bornacher.
We can ask.
That's pretty fast.
Yeah.
Too fast.
This year, it's not gonna be ready this year. Maybe that's, maybe it was gonna be...
Yeah, we're always going to go out to Ben, and then... All right, sorry to bother you. Why don't we, why don't we put in shovels in the ground for the youth center? And when would it be completed, roughly, guess? Okay, thanks. Great, bye, bye. He's hoping for, not written in concrete, shovels in the ground in July, and completion of September next year.
2020.
2020.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, occupation completion.
Which reminds me that, I don't know if you're aware of it, January, but the calculation for the library tax, it's a very complicated, I'm told it's a complicated calculation. I've never made it myself, myself. It's based, it's, of course, based on the total valuation of the town, and it has to do with, like, the last two years, and it, I, I'm not sure exactly how it goes, but the library income should increase by 150,000.
Right, yeah, I knew that, yeah.
Right, so, which is roughly, is that five? No, that can't be 5% of our income. What's her, her income's around 3 million something?
3.1, or 3.1, it might even be 3.3 on the budget, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
3.3 or 3.1?
3.3?
3.3. Well, it's 150,000.
3.3.
Is it 3? I'm not good at, I was out of school, and we did fractions, percentages.
Which is, I can't remember. Is that half a percent?
If it was 1 million, wouldn't it be 10%?
If it was, 100, 100,000 would be 10% of a million.
So, what's your taxes? 'Cause 3% is, which 160, 165 grand.
Right, 150,000.
So, maybe it's 0.3, or maybe it's a 30? 10%, no, 3%.
We're looking like geniuses here. It's, it's, it's four and a half percent.
Oh.
That's a four and a half percent increase, and that's interesting, 'cause I was concerned that the budget, the operating budget for the three branches was close, and I wanted a 5% buffer, and we just got it.
Oh, yeah, wow.
So, and we have time, too, because if we do buy the lands... I have to be careful here. It seems like the appropriation of land for the Southern Branch will be less costly than what we originally were anticipating. So, that leaves us a balance that we can eat into over time in case we overestimate, and then we can adjust expenses. So, I think we're well situated now.
Any other business?
Nope.
So, move to close? The next meeting? Uh, we have a meeting scheduled for April 24.
Which, I will be away, but...
Enjoy.
I will.
You too.
Yeah, someplace good?
Yes. Very.
I'd like to say that more than I'm...
All right, so now, move, close meeting, do I have a motion to close meeting?
I so moved.
All in favor? All right, aye. So, move. Thank you.
It hires, it's 6:21?
No, we're gonna discuss something else, Mayor.
Okay.
When I was doing, giving you your driver's license,
I was thinking that, um, when I was listening to the planning board for the, for the new, for the new youth center, they were discussing the closing hours, and one of the reasons that I originally went to see Dr. to Mr. Bornacher was that, to have a youth center, so that when the library closes...